Committee reports and communication. It's our Katie. All right. Josh?
Nothing, thank you.
Jess?
I don't have a committee report, but I just want to comment on this incredible facility board. And I saw it, I don't know when that was, our last tour, and it was in progress and it's now completed. And it's just a phenomenal use of resources and the time and energy spent, just Mike and your whole team. It is incredible. So congratulations.
Absolutely.
I'll just echo what Jessica said, but nothing to report on for me.
I will do the same thing. Congratulations. It's very exciting.
Now I have to do the same. It's amazing, amazing. Everyone should come out on Saturday to see the amazing stuff.
Well, I'm going to do the same, except I'm going to take a little different twist, because my children were students here back in the 90s, and I was PTO president here. And at that time, we always thought maybe we went before, you know, the school would have an addition within a few years, for years, for years. Well, fast forward a few superintendents later, and boards later, and, and different boards. Here we are, and I can't wait to send little video clips to my kids and show them, you know, what their old little Latimer Lane, a great place to grow, is all about. So this is really sort of heartwarming for me, a little nostalgic, because I get to, I saw it before, and I get to see it again today. So it really is a great place to grow. So with that also, I just to let you know that I will be at the CAPE CAPS convention this, this week. And so we will be having 600 of our closest Board of Ed colleagues, superintendents, and administrators there, and we will be talking about at least 20 resolutions coming before us that we're going to be voting on. These will be our platform as we go to legislature come early February when they convene. So this is going to be a very interesting, interesting conference, interesting year. And then today, we also had a call, as you know, we had elections last week, and I'll be in Washington in a few months, but we had a call today with, with some people in Washington about the post-election, was a post-election call about what's going on. And the education leadership in the Department of Education, there's a potential of four names that would be named for Secretary of Education. So nothing is being, firm finalized as of yet. But they talked about the education policy, the implications, and the federal funding priority shifts. And that is one thing that IDEA is, is going to stay. That will not be yanked or pulled, but unsure of other things. You've probably heard a lot about, you know, the Department of Education going to be, you know, going to be gone away, but it's very unlikely, according to them, because there's just a lot of implications and conceptual facts that are going on. Some of the policy-focused priorities going on, which will be going on in DC, and these are Senate priorities, because Senate and House are still in the priority list of who they're going to make as, as their chairs of their committees. But literacy reform, AI, education, health, youth apprenticeship, resource. So another point that they had mentioned was a Congresswoman Rosa DeLaurel may get a committee leadership, and if that happens, that will be great for Connecticut. We have a great relationship with her. She has been there for a long time, and if she does, she will be a real ally for education. So this is where we stand at the moment. We talked about the federalization of upcoming education issues and how to address those issues, but the bottom line is, is that the issues that we're addressing have to start at the local level, local governance. We don't even use local control anymore. We use local governance, and they, they stress this, that this is so important when we talk to our legislators here in Hartford and in DC. That is where it comes from, because it's going to be a whole new show, in DC, new legislators that will be there. So that is what's going on right now. And, you know, it isn't always about debate, but it's about policy, education policy. And the key thing is, is how can we align? And these are, these are some of the priorities and things that we talked about via NSBA. So we are really going to be watching this, working very hard, very diligently, but we have to do this with all, all our colleagues back home on the ground. So that's it.
We had an amazing full-day professional development day last Tuesday. It started with a keynote from Deacon Art Miller, who spoke about the importance of keeping individual peace and hope in the work that we do as educators. And then teachers were able to work on their individualized professional growth plans. So that was an incredible part of our new teacher evaluation system. They were so thankful for the time to do the work that they're passionate about and that they believe will make difference for our students. So great feedback. Neil and I also had a professional development evaluation committee, also known as PDAC Committee Meeting, who oversees the professional development in the district. And they shared their thanks for the time and the resources and the keynote. So great day.
Yeah, I want to put a finer point.
Jen mentioned Saturday that there's a continuation of the celebration here at Latimer Lane. We had the ribbon cutting tonight. But on Saturday, starting at 10:00 AM, we are going to have an open house for the community, and we are advertising that all over town. Hopefully, we'll get people between 10:00 and 1:00. When we advertised at first, we said tours every 15 minutes, but we came up with an even better idea. You can tour yourself at any time. You're going to get a self-guided map, and there will be six great students at each of, I think, nine stations to tell you about the media center, tell you about the gym, tell you about the kindergarten rooms. So you can come at any time, get a tour and a few snacks on a Saturday morning, and see this wonderful facility.
Jason?
Nothing.
I know you just said, don't want to catch you off guard, but anything for communications?
Yes. Did you want to talk about policy?
Nope.
Okay. So I wanted to say, we were supposed to have a policy committee meeting tonight, I mean, earlier today, but we have been canceling, our policy committee meetings have been canceled over the last couple of meetings. And the thing that I, guess I want to bring forward is that policy is something that's really important for us as a Board of Education team. And we need to meet, and I think that for the community, for the district, for, you know, all of the work that we do, policy is one of those tenants that we're being held accountable for. And so I would just ask that we figure this out, since we all came together and decided that we were going to try to do this to be accessible to the community and all of us, that we figure this out so that we can try to start meeting. That's what I have to say.
Thank you. I just wanted to, two, two quick things. Just wanted to reiterate what I said earlier. Just, I can't, I can't sit in this building without feeling just immense gratitude to the town at large for showing their faith in us again and support that we are, would be good stewards with their tax dollars and their support for education in this town. There's clearly a trust which is not taken for granted, and they should continue to show time and time again the value that they place on education in this town. And again, we've got now a world-class facility to meet the best-in-class education system in this town, and I just greatly appreciate it on the macro level. And again, Mike, what you did ushering this, ushering this through cannot be, it just has to be repeated. I just commend you, your team, and everybody that had, Jason, there were so many people that had a hand in this, that just, I just greatly appreciate all the hard work, and it is, it shows, absolutely, you know? It just shows. Separately, just want to quickly say we've met, the finance committee has met, we've had a great, I guess we've met twice now since the, since the creation, just starting to meet, just talk about budget, working in the budget season, so that process has, has started. Just wanted to, just to lay that out there.
Great. Just one quick shout-out. Our girls' field hockey team is in the quarterfinals of the state tournament right now down at Cheshire High School playing Guilford. So first-year coach and a team that's done real well this year, so good luck to them. I just wanted to, to share that, and that event was a lot of fun. We don't get too many of those opportunities to come out and really celebrate as an entire community, so it was wonderful.
Great. Do you want to go back to the?
Yes, we have our, our creative writers have come back. All right. So come on up, step forward. Sue Lemke is going to kind of tee this up for us this evening, this wonderful recognition.
Sure, and everyone can come and just stand behind the chairs there. Hello. This is great. So tonight, since this is going to be an elementary rapport, we thought it apropos to have some amazing individuals come before you. We have Frank Sulliani from Tooton Hills, Lisa Jacobs from Tooton Hills, Mel Mahan, who works in all five elementary schools, and Kristen Fitch from Central School. And two members that aren't a part of this amazing group tonight, but have been a part of this work, are Beth Scudder from Squadron Line and Rebecca Warshut, right here from Latimer Lane. And why they're being recognized is they all came together on their own time and said, how do we create some amazing strategies to really ignite the passion of our student writers? And they've been doing some amazing things, everything from a creative writing club to a newspaper to newscasts, and how do we incorporate some creativity in our writing in morning meeting? And they decided to all pull together and to write a proposal to the National Council of Teachers of English. And in your folders is the actual cover to the conference and the write-up of the proposal that has been accepted by this national conference and that they will be presenting at next week in Boston. So the work was acknowledged not only throughout all of our elementary communities, the way they got kids even more excited about writing, but these strategies were also recognized and will be presented to a group of their peers on the national level. So we thought that was pretty cool and that they should be here at the board tonight to be recognized.
Absolutely.
Is there anything that anyone would like to share about your work or about this experience?
I'll start by just saying a big thank you to all of you, because I've been able to go to the conference for many years, and this is the first year that I've gotten to have people from Simsbury come with me. And it is a conference that changed my life, and when I see the tag, people come with me. So thank you very, very much for supporting that, funding that, and making that happen for us. And then another big thank you is to these guys, because they really have come together for, I think we're on our third year, right? Almost every single month, coming to my house after school and sitting around talking about what we can do to keep writing really exciting and energetic and organically came up with the different ideas. So it was just a really organic, I don't know what this is going to be, and it became something really cool, so.
Great.
Big high fives to them.
Bring back all sorts of, let us know how it goes.
Yeah.
We're not really sure.
Find out.
We're not sure if nine people will show up to our site.
I'd like to get more than nine.
Take lots of pictures.
And thank you, again, thank you for the opportunity to do this, and thank you to Mel, huge shout-out for putting all this together. Her enthusiasm just goes beyond, and that's why we're all part of this. And we get to bring back what we learned with Mel and this group of teachers to our classrooms and disperse it amongst our school as well. So it has a broad reach throughout the system, and we're, we're very proud to be doing this, to be representing Simsbury at this, and it just, we're really looking forward to this. So again, thank you.
Well, your energy ignites passion, and when I look at the experience just here this evening and add certainly Beth and Rebecca to that, it's just great work. So thank you so much. Thank you for representing Simsbury beautifully.
Thanks, everybody. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, that's great. It's really exciting, actually. That's awesome. Can I go?
You can.
No, I mean, can I go to the?
I don't want to.
I'll talk to Katie. I'll talk to Katie about that. Talk to Katie about that later. First on the docket is, as usual, the approval of the minutes for the October 22nd meeting. They're in your packet. I'm making a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for the October 22nd Board of Ed Education meeting.
Thanks. Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, thank you. Next up is the approval of policy revisions.
So the policy committee did meet in September, at which time we took up the review of the new Title IX policies, both student and student interactions and adult interactions. So the 4,000 series relates to employee policies, and the 5,000 series relates to student policies. So these were presented as revisions to the August 1st revisions to the national Title IX law and brought forward by Shipman and Goodwin for our review. Two readings have gone, and it is ready for a vote.
Okay. Oh, the motions are in the, the motions are in your packet, folks.
I can.
I move to adopt the revised policy 4209, prohibition of sex discrimination, including sex-based harassment, effective November 12th, 2024.
Right, so second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, thank you.
I have another one.
Yep.
And I move to adopt the revised policy 5145 dot 51, prohibition of sex discrimination, including sex-based harassment, effective November 12th, 2024.
Your second.
Second.
Right. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, thank you.
And I'll just let you know that per this policy, every single employee of the Simsbury Public Schools has to do an hour of training, also provided to us by Shipman and Goodwin. So they were assigned that a couple of weeks ago, and they have until the end of the calendar year to finish that one-hour training.
Is it online, or do you make it into a PD, or what do you?
It's a, it's a online.
Do we pay as a whole group, or do we pay individually?
We paid as a district to, you know, size of your district, you pay for the training.
And that's a state mandate?
Absolutely, yeah. Federal mandate.
Yeah. Great.
So annual, is it annual? They'll have to do it?
They have to do it once every three years.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else? Central PTO gift.
That's over to me. So we heard the word gratitude a lot this evening, and here's something else to be grateful for. We have another generous gift from the Central PTO. The gift is for $3,400, and the donation will help defray the cost of Grade VI Camp Jewel for our Central School students. There's a motion there for your consideration.
Move that the proposed gift of $3,400 to Central School by the Central School Parent Teacher Organization be approved.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Just want to say again, our PTOs never, never cease to amaze and just always step up and love, you know, defraying the cost for Camp Jewel, whatever, just, just, again, my mom said I always needed to work on synonyms, so I'm going to say thankful this time and not gratitude, and not gratitude. So just very thankful for, for their, their help.
And it's good to see we're still doing that trip.
Yeah, absolutely.
One of my kids got to go.
Absolutely.
It's a good trip.
Right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, thank you very much. Okay, I think that's back to me. Cancellation of the November 26th meeting, since that's butts up against Thanksgiving. We're going to, we're going to cancel that one? I can, I can make the motion?
Mm-hmm. Yes, you can.
Okay, go ahead, Sean.
I would like to.
Please.
Move to cancel the Board of Education meeting scheduled on November 26th, 2024.
Second.
Great. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, thank you. So we'll be back, as it is down at the bottom, we'll be back on December 10th. Okay, next up, Sustainability Committee report.
All right, I will tee that one up. Hello, sir. A familiar face to many of us, Mr. Mark Scully, who is the chairperson of the Sustainability Committee in town. And one of the charges of that committee is to come and share with us kind of the vision and recommendations for potential work that could support the town, both the Board of Ed and the town side moving forward. Mark had an opportunity to share parts of his presentation with the Board of Selectmen, wasn't the Board of Finance, it was the Board of Selectmen, and we met with Mark, Neil myself, a couple of weeks ago. So he's here to share some of that information, answer any questions that people have, but this committee's certainly put in quite a bit of work and is very passionate about their cause. So welcome, Mark.
Great, thank you, Matt. And thank you all for the opportunity to speak today. As you say, this is actually, I think, one of the handouts that, that got distributed with your packet, is the rules and regulations for the Sustainability Committee. We actually should be reporting to you on an annual basis, so we've been somewhat remiss in not doing that, but we're also here specifically because we have drafted this sustainability plan that we would love to, for you to, to be aware of, and really would like to extend an invitation to work together on this. I'd like to start with just a little bit about the committee itself. Our primary role is really to advise the town and the schools on issues related to sustainability, and we'll come back to that word and what, and the, and the definition of that. We have four at-large members, Baird Faithfull, a teacher from the high school, Jamie Luchek, myself, and Michael Schulitz, and then we have ex officio members from planning, Holly Bem, our recycling committee, Joe Delia, we are fortunate to have Lydia from Board of Ed, and we have two vacant positions from Economic Development Commission and Culture Parks and Rec. We view the sustainability team more broadly, though, because if you come to a meeting, there's a bunch of people who aren't listed here but are quite active, so we have a, a good team. Our liaison to the Board of Selectmen is Kevin Beal, and we have staff assistants from Tom Roy at, at Public Works. We meet monthly, first Thursday at 6:30. You're always welcome. We are sort of the successor to what was once the Clean Energy Task Force. Then we formed a Sustainability Committee. I believe, Jeff, you were on that, and Jen, you may have been on at one point as well. And that, the, the narrow focus at first was to get certified in the Sustainable Connecticut Program. We've since merged Clean Energy Task Force and Sustainability, so we are one now. We are very proud to have held our first Sustainability Fair on May 4th of this year at the library. We've had events that were a part of September Fest or the Spooktacular Celebration, the Chamber Event, but this was really our own, our first time we've done our own Sustainability Fair. It was a huge success. It was a beautiful day. We had over 1,000 people, we had over 32 different vendors, from solar to composting to heat pumps and a food truck, and it was just a great day, and this will be, we think, an annual event. It was a terrific collaboration with the Simsbury Public Library, because they didn't just say, sure, you can use our space. They really said, oh, we've always wanted to do this, but you guys have the sort of sustainability expertise. So that was just great. We have a newsletter, comes out monthly. Baird Faithfull is our curator, is our, is our, our editor. I encourage you to subscribe to it. You can go to the, our web, our page on the town, on the Sustainability Committee page on the town website, and you can sign up there. It's a terrific monthly sort of summary of some key sustainability issues. There's that word, sustainability. So the next slide, what do we mean when we talk about sustainability? As the word suggests, sustainable means you can keep doing it, right, without depleting all of the resources, without destroying things, right? And that's a very broad definition, different ways of looking at that, but the way we've sort of defined sustainability is we are in balance with nature. What we're doing is equitable and inclusive of the entire community. It minimizes our contribution to climate change, and it protects and preserves our resources for future generations. If you're all familiar with the Sustainable Connecticut Program, there are 13 categories of sustainability, and we've listed seven here on this slide, and those are sort of the, I think, I think the main point is sustainability is a very broad term, right? We're not just talking about energy or waste. We're talking about land use, the economic inclusiveness, culture, all of the things, issues of sustainability. Having said that, your Sustainability Committee really focuses on energy and waste, right? I think if you look at each of the other issues, definitions of sustainability, you will find organizations in the town who are addressing them, right? If it's natural resources, we've got wetlands, we've got Conservation Commission. If it's transportation, we've got a bike pedestrian advice. So there's other groups. So really, we're a waste and an energy committee, just given the, you know, the limited resources that we have. So what we have issued, what we've put together, is a sustainability plan that really focuses at first on energy and waste. We did an energy plan a few years ago, and it, we made, we started to make the rounds of, really with different stakeholders in town. We got a bit sort of sidelined by COVID, and what we've done now is really a plan that contains both energy and waste. So each of those, I'd like to just talk a little bit about what's contained in there. You have the plan, I think you should have a, the actual detailed plan, so I'm not going to list every single action that we want to do, but just a couple of, a couple of key points. First of all, energy, right? We've done a bunch of analysis. Energy is a big issue for the schools, for the town, for the, for the public. We've done some calculations, and Simsbury broadly defined, including the schools, the town, the residents, the businesses. So we spend over $100 million a year on energy, or over $4,000 per person. Most of that still comes from fossil fuels, right? We're burning gasoline and diesel in our cars, we're heating with natural gas, heating oil typically, propane. And, and again, back to this definition, that's simply not sustainable, right? So there's so many things that we can do in, to reduce our energy usage, to be more efficient, and to save money in the process. The four steps that we point out, and they're on the bottom of this page, right? Those four, last four bullets are really the way to reduce our energy usage and to save money. First of all, we can be more efficient, right? I think the, the new construction here was done to a high standard of building performance, right? But when you look across the town and across some of our other schools, the first thing we should do is reduce the amount of energy we're using by being more efficient. Every upgrade we're doing, we need, you know, insulate to a high standard and air seal. So efficiency comes first, and then promoting solar in town, in schools, we'll talk a little bit more about this, are a terrific candidate for solar. And then we need to stop burning fossil fuels, so we need to electrify both the heating and cooling, and that means heat pumps, both for residents and for businesses and for schools. And transportation, that means electric vehicles. So it's efficiency, it's renewable energy, and it's electrification of transportation and electrification of heating and cooling. So you will see in the plan, each of those four categories, we've gone through and said, well, what can we do? And for each one, we've got sort of two breakdowns. First of all, what can we do as a school system, as a town, right? And there's this term that's used, lead by example, right? We can make sure that our school, that our buildings are built to the highest standard of efficiency. We can set a target of trying to get a lot of our energy from renewable sources, right? We can directly do things as a school system, as a town. And then the second part is, what can we do in the town among the residents and businesses, right? We don't have as much sway there, we can't do things directly, we can inform, we can raise awareness. So we can do things like raise awareness about solar and battery storage. The committee will be starting a, a campaign soon to, to do just that, to raise awareness about solar and battery storage. We can promote electric vehicles, we can raise awareness about how heat pumps work, right? So there's all kinds of things we can do to the town more broadly. But I think really what we can focus on is what can we do as a school system, right? How can we lead by example so that the buildings we're operating, the schools are, are sustainable, right? And I think just on energy for the school system, you can read the plan, you can see all the details, but I think one of the greatest opportunities we have is solar, right? We have big, you know, I think when we have the conversation among the town or among many businesses, there aren't as many buildings, there aren't as many town buildings that are great candidates for solar. But pretty much every school is a, not just a good, a great candidate for solar. There are good incentives at the state level, so I know we've had some great collaboration, you know, with Jason, helping to, you to get some proposals for solar on the high school, and I think we've got ideas for, as and I think we've got ideas for, as roofs are replaced going forward, solar is not just a great way to do the right thing, but it's also a great way to save a lot of money. You look at schools across the state, and we've got a study of, you know, which schools have solar. They're saving hundreds of thousands of dollars each year by putting solar, by locking in prices for their electricity that, you know, free up money for things that we'd rather be spending money on. So solar, I think, is a huge opportunity. So that's energy. The other big topic, and I'm not going to go through all the details, but as I said, you know, efficiency, we've got solar, we've got electric vehicles, there are things we can do as a school system there as well, and there is electric heat pumps. Waste is another issue that is simply not sustainable, right? You're probably aware that a huge share of our waste in Connecticut gets shipped out of state. We've shut down the incineration facility in Hartford. There are some other facilities in the state, but something like 60, it's a majority, I'm not sure of the exact percent, but a majority of waste in Connecticut gets shipped to Ohio, gets shipped to Pennsylvania, and that's simply, it doesn't make sense, we're living out of balance. So, and there's so many things that we can do as a community to reduce waste. The basic steps are, first of all, reducing waste at its source. Second, promoting reuse and repair. And third, maximizing waste diversion, so it doesn't all end up in the waste stream. And there's a terrific amount that the schools can do here as well. And we have, we've had some great collaboration with Meg from Squad Online where the Sustainability Committee was able to bring in a consultant and do a review of some of the cafeteria practices and make some recommendations for things that we're seeing some other towns do quite well, which is not just letting all of the waste in the cafeteria end up in the waste stream, but diverting as much of it as possible. And that's an education process, right? There may be some extra bins required, capturing the liquids, working with our waste taller, getting as much of it recycled as we can, even reused. There's things called share tables, that if there's food that hasn't even been opened, there's tables. So we've got, there's some great examples across the state of what towns are doing. We'd love to see every one of our schools with a program that involves the pupils, that's actually getting them hands-on and educating them about what gets recycled, what gets, what can be reused, what goes in the waste stream, what happens to it at that point. So a lot of funding available for these types of programs, so there's a lot that I think we can do as a town and as a school system to reduce our waste and really prevent a lot of it just going out of state. Where we are right now is, as Matt said, we presented the Sustainability Plan to the Board of Selectmen. I've looked forward to this chance to give you a flavor for what the plan is now. We're not asking you to approve every individual action on it yet. What we'd like to do is make sure you're aware of it, have your blessing that now we really flesh out some of the details, right? This was, the plan was pretty much written by the committee, and that's not, you know, that's, that's not going to work, right? We need, we need buy-in, we need input. So we will now, we would like to work now with Public Works, with Planning, with the school system, so that we can actually go through that plan and say, yeah, we can do that one, that one we're going to have to put off a little while, but let's make sure, we're going to commit to doing this one in two years, and let's put together a plan that I think will, what we'd like to do is work out the details of the plan and then come back to you, and then maybe for a more formal approval of that plan. And I think, so we'd love your input. Take a look at the plan, feel free to ask questions at any time, but we'll be back with more details on what we can do together. Thank you.
I have a couple of questions.
Thank you.
So I'm glad to hear that Meg, you worked with Meg, but my question as you were talking was, have you been able to get into the other schools, even from the standpoint of talking to the students? You know, a lot of times we can invoke change through students going home and talking to their parents. And so, you know, have you been able to connect with the principals to maybe come in through, you know, you know, times that they're talking to the whole body?
Right. At this point, we've only really done any kind of conversations with Squad Online, but we would love to do that. I think we're working on setting up some conversations with the new, is it Food Services Director or Nutrition Director? But we'd love to do, as you say, we, working with the kids, right? And it's an educational and experience, but also they're the ones that are going to live with us a lot longer than we will.
Does somebody, somebody down here have a question?
No, I think it's very beneficial. I think, I think being able to talk to multiple groups to make it more concise and make it more feasible, which is great. And I think it's a good, great jump-off point to talk about, to make the conversation start.
We have some great conversations, right? It's like anything else that's
Huge.
Kind of high-level and huge, you need to, we need to focus on priorities and align those priorities with focus areas of the board. And it's interesting, we're in our strategic planning process now as a board with a committee creating new goals, and this has worked its way into the conversation and the sustainability goal in terms of trying to identify a few things.
If you do, if you go through the plan, it's a, maybe it gets a little exhausting, and you realize it's going to, we're not going to be able to do all of that without some kind of more support, right? We're all volunteers on the committee. We get some support from Public Works, but I think if you look at, you know, even, even if you have a solar installer who's doing a lot of the heavy lifting in terms of interconnection and filing and design work, you can probably vouch, it's still a lot of work for somebody on staff, right, to be managing the contracts and managing the projects. So I think there's a lot more we could do if the town, we'll be asking again in the next budget round for some form of support, whether it's a sustainability coordinator, an energy manager, part-time or full-time, but I think other towns have seen that those types of people more than pay their own costs by the savings from solar, that grants are able to attract the efficiency savings, whatnot. Good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great.
Next up is the elementary curriculum report.
Yes, I will have Sue kind of introduce this, but I see the whole team came out to support Betsy and Lisa tonight. But it's one thing we talked about in our planning prior to the year is, we've been receiving, over the course of the last few years, individual updates at the elementary level from the different schools, and we thought it would be good to come back together in terms of a curriculum overview with some of the initiatives and priorities we do have going on this year, and that is the work of Betsy Gonzalez. So Sue.
Terrific. So joining Betsy this evening is Lisa Smith. Lisa Smith is a math coach at Central School. She's presented to the board before relative to our Think Math curriculum, so she joins Betsy, but truly behind her, doing this work, are the principals, Director of Pupil Services, Katie Crisula, and we are going with the theme of collaboration and team effort this evening, whether it be this renovation project or that wonderful recognition. So Betsy is going to outline, similarly to how Principal Seidel did with the high school, Mr. Baker did with the middle school, what the data's looking like from an elementary lens. She will then talk about the leadership priorities specifically in math and in reading. So we have presented before around some of the legislative changes specifically relative to the science of reading, K3, so Betsy will give you an update on how that's going, share a little bit about our social emotional learning expectations with everyday speech, share a little bit more about the collaboration that happens between general education and special education, and then discuss some of the challenges ahead. Because when you are moving work to do better for kids every day, there's challenges that come along with that, so she'll highlight some of those. So Betsy and Lisa, over to the both of you.
Thanks, Sue. Thanks, Lisa, for joining me tonight. And while my colleagues are sitting behind me, we truly do this work side by side. And so all of the work that I'm sharing out today is certainly done alongside of our very amazing and supportive and talented principals, and then their school-based teams that consists of their language arts consultants and their math coaches and their building. So it's a true team approach to all that we're doing and all that we're going to share tonight. So as you know, smarter balanced is one of our public markers. It's a summit of assessment for us that tells us how our students are doing relative to grade level standards. We do a lot of information when that information becomes live to us. There might be a few of us in this room who check morning, noon, and all hours of the night to see when that data is available, so we can get a sneak peek to see where we are and to do the celebrations alongside of our teachers who work tirelessly to teach their students and give them what they need to succeed. And so we want to celebrate that student growth, we want to celebrate cohort growth of kids, and we also want to look at where we are doing well and where are our strengths related to ELA, English Language Arts, and mathematics and in science, and where we may have some room to grow. And so that assessment provides us with some detail that we use to set our plans for the year, from a curricular level, from the way that we look at assessment, and the way that we talk with teachers about data and some instructional priorities. So we do a lot of this information, starting in early to mid-May when we have that sneak peek. But once teachers come back, we really pull out this data to look at students and look at where kids are, what do they need, how might we differentiate instruction, whether it's enriching some curriculum for students or giving students some scaffolds that they need to be successful. But there's a lot of information that we gather from this that we put into practice. So as we look at the ELA data, which encompasses listening, it encompasses reading and writing, research and inquiry, there's a lot that's assessed there. We've made some really nice incremental gains over the years, and if you look at the performance from 2023 to 2024, we grew 2%, which is pretty significant when we're looking at this collective data and how our students are responding to instruction. We had some really nice growth with individual grade levels from year to year, from one year to the next. We also had some nice cohort growth. So when you look on the diagonal and you look at students from third to fourth grade, they're making some really nice improvements, and we're also making sure that we're closing any achievement gap that we might see. So that's why we monitor that cohort data, so we're really proud of that. But I'm really, really proud of the work that happened in third grade this year. We put together a good old-fashioned action plan and paid really close attention to what was going on, where, why were we getting these results that when we fell, fell less than 70%? It wasn't a place that any of us wanted to be, including our teachers, and we wanted to make sure that we knew exactly what we needed to focus on. So we dug into what this assessment calls some targets, and it gives us the details related to the grade level standards of what's expected of students. And what we found in third grade is that we had some work to do with information reading. There were enough targets in that category where students fell a little bit short collectively across the five schools. So with that information, we kept digging and we thought, what would be most helpful for teachers? Because there's so much for them to get their heads around related to these standards. And so one of the things that we created for teachers and with teachers was something that we call the Work of the Grade. So it's a one-pager, and we loved it so much that we didn't stop at third grade, we kept going and made one for grade four, for grade five, and for grade six. So teachers had a tool that they could just glance at to see the work that they need to reinforce and come back to over time, because there's lots of instructional minutes related to literacy in their schedules, and that work isn't one and done and you move on. So there are opportunities in their instructional blocks and in their time to really teach into some of these skills, and they certainly did just that. We also took a look at our assessments to make sure our assessments were aligned to the instruction and what students needed to know and be able to do, and we incorporated a little bit more test prep into the third-grade curriculum. It's woven in in very natural ways into the core curriculum that teachers teach. Students don't know they're engaged in test prep, but we wanted to make sure we aligned some practices because it's different. It looks different. There are some different things that kids are asked to do related to multiple choice, and nuances of how questions are asked, how to answer those questions. And so teachers teach into that, and when students are eight, there's a lot for them to show in terms of their understanding, and they're asked to do a lot. And so we wanted to be really explicit with that instruction, and so we did, and we really see the results of that. And so we will continue to monitor that. We have lots of other measures that we use throughout the course of the year to give us a sense of where students are and how they're responding to the day-to-day instruction, and teachers look at that information all the time. So we will keep our eye on third grade, and we hope to sit here next year with even stronger third-grade data and data across the board.
Matt?
Matt? Okay, so we are really proud of having 2% growth each of the last three years in math, too. And when we were talking about what can we really attribute that to, something that we're really proud of is our implementation of something called Spiral Review in grades three through six in math. So unlike, Betsy just talked about this, but unlike ELA, math is very, you teach a standard within a particular unit, you assess it, and then it will be assessed on SBA in the spring, but you don't necessarily come back to it. So you learn multiplication and division of decimals in November of fifth grade, and you don't necessarily see that again until April when you're on the SBA test. And we realized that that was really hard for kids, like they need to keep practicing those skills to keep them fresh. And so we were able to create almost this separate scope and sequence to come back to those skills in grades three through six. And we also heard that teachers concerned of, when am I going to do this? Unlike ELA, we only have, math only has 50 to 60 minutes of instructional time, ELA has more, so we were able to create, add an extra 15 minutes in everyone's schedule in grades three through six for something we called supplemental math, which is where this Spiral Review came in. So we've seen a lot, a lot of success with kids getting to that test and being like, oh, yeah, like, I do remember this because we've been working on it every day since we learned it in class. We have really, we had really strong performance in our Think Math pilot classrooms from last year. The data is not shown here, but we did monitor how those classrooms did versus the classrooms that were not Think Math classrooms, and the performance was really strong, especially in grade five. We're also finding that the curriculum has a really solid alignment and stays closer to grade level standards, so that feels great for kids and teachers. Like, the work that they're doing every day is matching what's assessed on that test at the end of the year. There's really great steady cohort gains. The one exception to that is grade four to five. Fun fact, in case you don't know, in all of K through six math, grade five is by far the hardest math. It is, the rigor is insane, the number of standards that they are assessed on is insane, so it's not surprising, but it's just a really academically rigorous grade level, so we're not surprised by that, and we're, you know, continually working on seeing how we can get that four to five to not have that dip. Grade six was an amazing, up 11% from last year, so students are really able to maintain those skills from five through six, although the fifth-grade curriculum, you know, is so challenging, they keep, they hold on to it in sixth grade. And in spring of 2022, our team of math coaches looked at the scope and sequence of the grade six units and found some areas where there were high priority standards that were not necessarily being taught before SBA, so we realigned that scope and sequence so that kids got all of the learning that they really needed to of those most important math standards before the test. And then, this is my favorite one, maintaining a 2% gap between ELA and math, because I'm a former third-grade teacher at Central before I became a math coach, and ELA just always, always out before math, and we are always chasing them, and we're finally beginning to catch up, so that's really, really
Game on.
Totally.
Not competitive, right?
No.
All right. In the area of science, I know when Scott Baker talked to you about the Henry James Report and the NGSS assessment that students take in grades five, eight, and then where at their high school, it's a challenging test, and it's an assessment that where our results have been a little inconsistent over time, and so we're taking a look at that. We've incorporated test prep unit, it is very specific to how to take the science test because it's very different. Students are engaged in online experiments where they have to do some inquiry work, and they're going through this, really the scientific processes, they're working through some questions that they have to use some knowledge that they have related to some text and some images, and then they're, they're collecting some data, and there's a lot that they have to do. So it isn't a straightforward assessment, it's quite challenging, it's quite rigorous, and it has a very different platform, and it's the first time they take it is in grade five. So we are working to calibrate our instruction. We have some inconsistent performances. And it has a very different platform. And it's the first time they take it is in grade five. So we are working to calibrate our instruction. We have some inconsistent performances across schools. So we're doing some work with teachers and building some more background and some more knowledge. So teachers have more comfort in understanding what that platform is like and to be able to provide some more opportunities for students to practice that. Because it's really a matter of just practicing on this platform. We have a very strong and aligned core curriculum, but it's the nuances of the technology that is different for students, for sure. All right. So we have four core priorities at the elementary level. And while they may look like they're only four, they're big. And so you're going to hear a little bit more about where we are with the implementation of Think Mathematics. We have a program that's called Developing Roots, and that's our kindergarten program. And then we have our program that we're utilizing in grades two through five, Think Math. And Lisa's going to talk about that. And we are hard at work in exploring some of the state-approved resources around the state mandate of the science of reading and ensuring that we have identified the right resource for our teachers and for our students that will need to be implemented next year. We have a great collaboration with our special ed team and our classroom teachers. We'll talk a little bit about some of that exciting work. And our elementary teachers are implementing their new SEL curriculum this year called Everyday Speech in our grades K through six.
Okay. So we came together as a team, math coaches, in the spring to set some priorities for year one of this full implementation. So that coaches across all schools are coaching with a similar message. All teachers are working on the same thing and our priorities are clear for teachers. Because we have the best teachers who want to be amazing at everything from day one. And so we felt like we needed to identify like, okay, what are our goals and successes just for, this is year one, just for right now. So the first one is that ensuring that the lesson structure within this program is evident in all classrooms. And when I say lesson structure, I mean the predictable way that the parts of a lesson go every day. So a math lesson in K is a little bit different, but one through five, it doesn't matter if you're in a first grade classroom or if you're in a fifth grade classroom. The lesson is going the same way in all of the classrooms, just the content is different. So we wanted to make sure that we had a solid lesson structure with tight math routines because it's crucial to the success of the program. So I'm going to brag a little bit because it was two of my teachers who created, a first grade teacher and third grade teacher, what we called a launch unit that we built in the spring. And we actually rolled it out to teachers last spring so they could kind of dip their toes in it and get a little prepped before the fall. And it really helped the transition for teachers and for kids. And it helps them build these routines and structures and systems in their math classroom before they were teaching any content. Teachers were super appreciative of it. It like worked so well. And they actually have been making a ton of connections between SEL and math. The program is built on a ton of collaboration and discussion. And so teachers have been saying, I've heard teachers say like, oh my gosh, we end up talking about SEL in math even more than I expected. So it's great, like cross-curricular connections. If you were to walk into any Think Math classroom now, like, the students are collaborating, they're talking, and you hear such a buzz in math classrooms. The engagement is really high despite how sometimes hard math can be. The other, another priority was for coaches to plan and coach consistently with grade level teams, including special education teachers. So we wanted to make sure that teachers are meeting regularly with each other and with coaches during PLCs to plan a unit before they even teach it, as opposed to just looking at it day-to-day. They're really diving into the strategies behind the math. And we're able to help them plan to push students' thinking past just basic computation and understanding of skills to really higher level thinking and application of like really complex problem solving, which is much more similar and aligned to what they see on SBA in the spring. We are refining our assessment practices. Teachers analyze and study assessments before, as the first step in beginning to plan a unit. So they know where they're ending up before they start. The assessments really mirror the work of the day-to-day teaching, which promotes higher level thinking and complex problem solving. And we're also pushing teachers, and teachers are pushing themselves, to think about other ways to formatively assess students. So not just waiting until the test at the end of the unit to see, do my students get it or not? But identifying a body of evidence, math journals, independent work, just teacher anecdotal observation notes to determine mastery. So it's not just waiting for one test at the end. We are able to communicate and partner with families. Parents receive the assessments at home that show their child's progress after any given test. So nothing is a, you know, surprise when report cards and parent-teacher conferences come around. And another really awesome part of this program is they have what they call Home Link Letters. That kind of, they give examples of, there's all these like Instagram reels of like, I don't know how my kid does Common Core math because it doesn't look anything like how I did math. The program has examples for parents so that they know like, this is how the teacher is teaching the students. And they have games and stuff that you can do at home without anything except maybe like a deck of playing cards. So parents can really support kids at home. And then finally, nothing new, but of course, one of our priorities is always to monitor student achievement. So we have our regular student-centered PLCs and data teams. And something that coaches have done is help to realign our intervention plans in math so that they go along with the new curriculum so that like our most at-risk kids are seeing the same things in the classroom and in intervention to kind of streamline that, you know, for them.
Great. Thanks, Lisa.
Yeah.
So as part of the state expectations around the science of reading, there are two things that we are responsible for. This year, all districts needed to implement these state-approved assessments. And for us, it's an assessment that is called the DIBELS Eight. And it's an assessment suite of literacy assessments that get at some foundational skills for literacy. That's not a new assessment for us. It's something we've given for many years and we give it to all students as part of a universal screen. What is new is the platform that we're using because there's a program that's called M-Class. We have some training, more training tomorrow to learn about how to access some of these reports and features because it creates some very helpful data displays to help teachers and interventionists target instruction for students who might need some more practice or need to have their skills monitored a little bit more closely. So that's the first thing, and that is well underway. And then the second thing is, starting next year, we are responsible for identifying one of the state-approved reading programs. And there are eight of them. To date, we have vetted all eight. Started this work last spring with the Language Arts Consultants. And Jeanette Belmonte is co-facilitating this committee that we have. That includes teachers and interventionists and special ed teachers and administrators. As we're looking at these more deeply, we've had vendors come in from these programs to give us an overview of what they're all about. And we're also measuring these programs up to what we're calling our guiding beliefs. Because not only do we expect that these programs are aligned to the science of reading and the skills that students need to be successful in grades K through three, we also want to make sure that we're selecting a resource that's going to help us with differentiation so that we never lose sight of what individual students need or small groups of students need. So it's not just one program for all or one response to instruction for all. We want to make sure our students have a choice. We want to make sure that they have opportunities to read independently because they're different. It's a different approach to teaching literacy as we think about how we address this knowledge block that we have to identify and implement some instruction around. That was the one thing in our waiver that the state said you need to address that as part of this waiver process. So that's some, we've done a lot of learning and understanding about what it is, what it looks like, and what is going to be the best resource for our students. We're also looking at these programs and we have to align it with standards and make sure that the rigor is there as we think about those expectations of the smarter balance. So we want to have both horizontal and vertical. We want to make sure it's a program that both horizontally and vertically addresses the needs of our kids. So we don't see a cliff where the expectations look different for our students as they transition from grade to grade. So we have a district team that started to meet this year. We brought in teachers to take a look at what we've done to date. We put three programs out in front of our SOR advisory team, reviewed that with them. Last week, we had one of the vendors come back to give another overview. And starting in December, our transition team members of this science of reading committee will be trying a unit from this program in their classrooms. So classroom teachers will work closely with their language arts consultants in the building. And together, they will plan and implement one of these units to see how it goes, to see how it feels, to see how kids respond. We're going to try some of the assessments. We're going to try the lessons with fidelity and to get some really solid feedback from the experience that our teachers and our students have. So we're excited about that and stay tuned and there'll be, there'll be more to come, for sure. As part of our SEL curriculum, our teachers in grades K through five are teaching a program called Everyday Speech. Our teachers had professional development in August where this was kicked off and it was launched with some, some training. We have a scope and sequence that is located on our website as part of the Equity and Access page. So it's very transparent for all. And then teachers certainly have access to additional lessons and activities that they might need. Some teachers are collaborating with different support staff in their buildings and talking about students and thinking about what would be helpful. And I want to just give our teachers a shout out. I had two teachers stop me last week to talk about how this SEL curriculum is so helpful in the math classroom. Lisa, you said it. But it's something that we continue to hear around perseverance, problem solving, grit, determination, and really learning skills to overcome hard things. So it's nice to see that transition and for students to be able to apply it in their academic settings as well. So as part of our work and as part of our collaboration with Katie Crisula and her amazing team of special ed teachers and department supervisors, we've worked together to come up with some ways that we can be a little bit more systematic about how we look at data for all of our students. We collaborate around, when we have our data that we have from our assessments, we look at body of evidence, and we talk about what students need. Our coaches, our math coaches and our language arts consultants are sitting at the table with classroom teachers, special ed teachers, looking at those results and engaged in some collaborative planning to think through, what does a student in front of us, in front of you need? And how do we go about teaching that student? And so we have the experts at the table who have the content expertise. And we have, everybody brings something to that conversation. And as a result, we have some pretty great plans in place and lots of great supportive collaborative things going on to support our students. We also have our reading interventionists often working with students who require some specialized reading. And teams are sitting down, looking at schedules, looking at needs of students and thinking about where that best place for instruction might be. And it's a true collaborative effort as we're thinking through what that teach is all about and how that student is going to best succeed. So with curriculum is always the job of managing the pace of change. And in these two years with a new math curriculum and a new literacy curriculum for grades K through three next year, we really have to pay careful attention to what that feels like for a classroom teacher. What's that like for a student who is learning some new things alongside of their teacher? And for families, and making sure our families understand what it is that is different, what we're asking of students in terms of expectations. But when we go back to kind of that management piece, it's a lot about time. It's a lot about making sure teachers have time and the people, resources who can coach and guide and support along the way. And it's making sure that they have time to step away to just think about what it is that they need to know around some different approaches to pedagogy and their instruction. So that is something that Sue and I will work very closely on, obviously with the support of our principals and our very talented coaches, to make sure that we are very much aware of that and how we allocate time and really set our priorities, especially around professional development and professional learning communities. So the teachers feel supported in this transition. We know that there will be a budgetary impact with a new reading program. We're in the process of gathering some quotes now to see what that looks like. We do have some grant funding through a state grant that we will be utilizing towards the purchase of a program. But we certainly will have some costs that will be reoccurring from year to year as, after this election and after the first year of implementation. And I have to give a huge shout out to a group that's not on this list, our teachers. Because they work tirelessly doing all the things we talked about tonight. They make themselves available. They are willing to partner. They're willing to give their time. They want to grow. They want to meet the needs of their students. They want to be part of this collective work. We don't sit in an office and crank this out. We very much want to engage and do engage our classroom teachers and listen to their voices for feedback. But I have to give them a huge shout out because they are the ones that make it happen in their classrooms every day. But we couldn't do this without all of the folks on this list, including you, who always support the work that we're doing and ask great questions and really just support financially and just helping us succeed in the work that we do to support our students. So thank you.
Thanks.
Any questions? Josh, hold on, Josh.
Yeah, I had a few. Thank you for the presentation. Just a few comments. Number one, the Home Link sheets are amazing. So I'm glad you called them.
I wish I had.
I mentioned that to people just on my own, like, before I like, she's in fifth grade, before I asked her like, why? Yeah. Why are you drawing quadrants when you just have to add numbers? But like, it gives you like, chill. This is what they're supposed to do.
Maybe we'll put a sample in an update for you on a Friday.
The Home Link is really, really good. Couple other comments. On the science of reading and things like that, just in general, right? Obviously, you were talking about kind of, it's like, almost like in fact-finding and different things like that. Especially with the reading, is there any kind of voice of customer or reaching out to parents or PTR? Any element of like, what are they seeing at home with the reading? Because that one feels like the most where if you're looking at how the reading program's doing, like, that's the one at home with parents, right? Like, Think Math, right? Like, just guide them the way the teachers are teaching them. A lot of times with the reading, you're kind of like seeing or hearing things, right, in that regard. So I'm just curious on that. When it comes to any kind of curriculum reviews with things like that, do the parents have any input in the data you're collecting in any way? And if not, is there some way to kind of in the future, take that into consideration?
Yeah, that's a great question. Thanks for asking. There are a couple of things. So one of the things that we actually did this year was we updated the slides that teachers use as part of their back-to-school evenings with their, their families. And so we wanted to make sure there were some things in there that would start educating families about some things that might look different. Some of the teachers will say that, you know, we had a parent who had a student go through first grade three years ago. And it's different. And we've got different books that are going home that have a more decodable patterns. Jill Benini was here last year, last year with me and was talking a little bit about some of those changes. So we're trying to do that. We definitely updated our curriculum handbook with all of the, those changes. And we had a meeting today and we're actually talking about some parent nights to begin some different educational classes for parents, just so they understand the work that's happening and the ways that we still want families to support literacy at home.
Excellent. Thank you. And then just the last one. You'd mentioned one of the things and the thing about is find implications coming up. And there was Think Math in grade six and keeping an eye on that. And I'm just curious, with Think Math kind of coming through to grade six and then how that interacts with Henry James for placement for grade seven, is there anything new, unique, or something to keep an eye on there for how that'll translate as they go into middle school with this?
Yeah. So last year, we had a sixth grade teacher on the committee. So when we were looking at this program, we wanted to make sure that we had sixth grade teacher eyes on what students were learning in fifth grade and any implications for sixth grade. And there weren't any, which was great. And our fifth grade teachers are actually spending time with our sixth grade teachers right now. Or I should say, the sixth grade teachers are spending time with the fifth grade teachers, wanting to watch what kids are doing, see what the experiences are like. And they're making some adjustments to their instruction as well, just based on the structures of the Think Math lesson. There is a middle school program that's being developed. And it's something that's too early to tell. It's not out yet for us to even take a look at. But we certainly are paying very careful attention to that, that coordination across grade levels.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Sure.
Yeah. So great update. But two things I have is, one, you're sharing the data from year to year. How are you, like, if you were to look to next year, where do you want your numbers? How do you know you're being successful? You know, what planning are you putting in place so you can measure? You know, because I see it here, but you'll come back to us next year. And we'll say, well, how did you know, were you successful? What are you using to measure yourself?
So we use a lot of these markers. When I write my goals for Sue and Matt, my goals are ambitious. When I write my goals for Sue and Matt, my goals are ambitious and they're always higher. And so, I think about where I want to be and where I think I can push based on cohorts of students and how they're performing and what seems like a realistic growth measure. And we also use a lot of other markers. This is just one piece of information and one piece of the body of evidence and we have to remember that. But we also have other measures like STAR and district assessments and lots of other tools that teachers are using to determine student success. But I, we look at patterns, we look at bands of students. One of the things that we can see is kids falling in different levels of success and performance on this, on this assessment. Looking at students that we think we can push and we want to push all kids up at least one level, right? So, that is part of our conversation when we meet at the beginning of the year with all of the coaches and with the principals. We talk about all this. We talk about where we think we can grow and where we think we can get. And it's not just about a number by any means. It's ensuring that students have mastery of grade level standards. That's what's important. And this is just a marker for us to say, are we on track? Do we have other evidence? And sometimes we do. Sometimes it doesn't match exactly what we're seeing in the classroom, but we, we'll see it the next year. So.
The other question that I have is, so I know we're focused on math and ELA, but the science numbers. So, what are we doing in that space?
Yep, so we are doing some professional development with teachers, not only in grade five, but with, in grade four as well. Because this is, it's multiple years of content that could appear on this assessment. So, we have to make sure that when we identify the different types of sciences and the units that students are learning, it aligns with the framework and it certainly is aligned with some of these expectations. So, we are using a program that's called Mystery Science. And that resource has grown in the last year. So, it has some new features. We've made our science units a little bit more formal and aligned to standards. It's got some different assessment measures built in, it's got some vocabulary woven in. So, we've formalized the curriculum that the teachers are using. And it also includes some of these NGSS-like types of questions that kids are going to be asked to do when they take the assessment, assessment for the first time in fifth grade.
So, I think what's different with science is that you're only formally assessed on this in grade five. So, when Betsy says multiple years, right? So, you have this, these lessons developed over time. Science and social studies, content wise, don't get as much time as your ELA and math. That's just part of the reality of the elementary day. So, there's a lot that goes into it. What we do know is that when they are reaching middle school, where they are having science instruction every day and then through high school, they are, they continue to be one and two in our dirg in science. So, what we start maybe off slow in grade five, we certainly meet and exceed those bars in middle school and high school.
Hi.
Jessica.
Thank you for the presentation as always. On the science of reading program that you're evaluating, I think you said there were eight and you're down to like one that you're going to quasi pilot. For the one that seems most promising, have you or will you be reaching out to other schools who've implemented the program and talk to them about what they're doing? Not just the ones that the content creator is advising you to talk to.
Yes, we've been talking to a lot of people.
Okay.
Sue's has a network that she's, talks to quite frequently. I have my network, they're usually the same people in different roles. And it's been very, very helpful. They've been very helpful and because they're in different places with their implementation, whether it's been a more formal pilot or something that they started to implement this year. So, it's been very helpful for us to get a sense of what people are using, why they've made these decisions. And when you look at what's, what districts are using throughout the state, they're different. They're using a lot of different things. So, it's not trending where most districts are using this. So, we've talked to a lot of people because we want to know why you've chosen A, B, C, D, like why? Like what made you choose that as we think about what's going to be the right resource for us?
Great. Thank you for that work.
I just wanted to jump on one comment.
It's kind of on the heels of Sharon's question about the data and the predictability of things, you know? And I appreciate, and we've worked together for a long time, the managing pace of change, right? We've talked about that in our district for a long time. We want to do a lot of things, we want to do them well. And some of this change, we planned thoughtfully, some of this change was kind of pushed on to us. So, it will be interesting even from a, honestly, from a data and achievement standpoint, how this volume of change does impact standardized measures, right? And we've, we've talked in the past about programmatic change. Sometimes in a year or two leads to implementation dip. Our pilot didn't look that way, but it's going to be interesting with everything that we're juggling and talking about at the elementary level kind of once again in this cycle. So, I appreciate you put that out there. I know we're working hard. You know, when I meet with principals, what's the pulse? How are we feeling? Because we know if the teachers are feeling it, the kids will feel it. And it's just really important for us to consider. So, I want to, I think a lot of these things are tied together in the end on that. But our desire to do well can't get in the way of the pace of the day for the kids and for the, the professional staff. So, I appreciate that comment.
I just wanted to say, can we go back to the first two slides that you guys had the? I just want to make sure I'm reading this right.
Reading first.
Yeah. If you look at this year's fourth graders, so last year's third graders, whether it was on ELA or math, you guys knocked it out of the park. I mean, in ELA up 12% at grade level and in math, I think it was seven. I mean, whatever you guys and whatever all you are doing with that group is, is really working. It's great. Just want to say appreciate it.
And side note, even more impressive is that that is the COVID kindergarten year. It just so happens that my son.
Well, how do you know that, Jen?
Keep watching. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Betsy. Thank you, Lisa. Thank you, principals.
Thanks for coming on, everybody.
Thank you.
Okay. Sorry. Capital improvement.
Yes. So, you had referenced Jeff, the finance subcommittee meeting the other day. We took some time and went through a conversation about the first year capital plan. So, I've invited Jason here this evening. I think one of the things as a board we need to think about and consider moving into this budget year, where we know we're coming off of, I mean, there have been a lot of conversations, right? The reval year, significant tax increase for residents, a significant tax increase last year. We've had, you know, we've been supported with some budgets where we've really allocated quite a bit of resources towards special education and some other things that would behoove us in my kind of strategy conversations with, with Mark Nelson. If you are able to adjust capital dollars out a year, that can help with operating relief on the other side. So, we talked about that a little bit in the, the finance meeting. So, we went into this year's initial planning with that spirit in mind. So, I'm asking Jason to review what was on the year one capital and what our kind of recommendations are moving forward.
So, the biggest dollar amount item on that was the Henry James Roof Project, which was a $2.5 billion Phase One project. The Henry James Roof is over 50,000 square feet. It's about 25 years old. We do feel comfortable pushing that particular project a year forward. One of the reasons for that is most of the, most of the other schools at this time have had their new roof projects. So, our operating budget line item for roof repairs is healthy. Looking to catch anything that happens on that roof in that time period. The second item that was originally planned was the high school field renovation. So, the grass fields to the north of the high school. We had some numbers from previous quotes, but we did pay for a design study, come out, do land surveys and actually do an architectural drawing for that, for that project. Unfortunately, when the numbers came back, they took some things into account that the previous quotes had not taken into account, such as the ADA access for paths to these fields. Also, the level of wetland work that would need to be done in terms of permitting and work in those areas. So, the numbers that came back were significantly higher, almost double. So, at this time, we're looking at other field choices. It's not to say that we're, we know that we're pushing that out for X amount of time. It's just we need to reevaluate the entire needs of that space.
I, I would just share on that front and I shared with the, the subcommittee. Our intention there and our goal with that large area of fields was to kind of maximize good, solid practice space to kind of get us back in the routine of practice after school, get home, eat, get your homework done. We have so many people sharing the turf field right now that it really chops up the time. You know, a $1.8 million investment for practice fields with a lot of it being as Jason said, floodplain issues, sidewalks, ADA compliance, kind of takes away this, the spirit of what we were actually trying to do. And it, and it actually puts the dollar figure in alignment with what it would act, you know, cost to put potentially a second turf field in or have that community conversation down the road, which would really change the overall feel of the high school facility. So, reiterating a little bit of what Jason said with some more detail, I think it needs to be moved out. Obviously, the way that the capital projects the last few years have flowed, it's a little bit of that one year, what can we get done? We push to the next year. In our strategic planning conversations in the committee and at various levels of our administrative council and even the board when we met, we need to take a hard relook at the capital planning work we have already done with Tecton, the athletic piece of it. And I think we prioritize that work. So, we come back with a, a refreshed look of this. You know, start those conversations, obviously, with that sixth grade conversation the board desires to have this year with Tecton and move that into a plan for consideration next year. So, I think it just makes a lot of sense. I don't think that dollar figure, you know, the feedback from the subcommittee, I mean, you come in a million dollars over what the, what the placeholder was. It's not a reasonable conversation at this point. And it's kind of a different scope than we thought about. So.
Can I comment?
Sure.
So, I am not part of the subcommittee. So, I will, I'm just speaking for my own self here. But I do think that it is unfortunate that that piece is being put off. And Lord knows how many years it really will be put off. Because I do think that from a student point of view, when you have that many kids, like the percentage is unbelievable of kids who participate in sports. And having that irregular schedule about round when they're going to practice and when they have to get back and when they're going to be able to eat dinner and stuff, does impact their overall health and mental health. And so, I think it is unfortunate, but.
And it's a relook, as I said.
Yeah.
It's, let's reevaluate based on the numbers that did come up. The remaining three items are the biennial, every other year types of projects. So, security is one of the things we've been looking at. Traditionally, this is used for things like bollards and glass film and security cameras. And again, in this go around, the focus would be on enhancements to the cameras and to the access control systems, the door areas. And that's a $250,000. The next two things relate to paving. And this is a first time around for this particular every other year budget item. We're finding that's been a good strategy for getting things onto the budget that have traditionally been needs that are big ticket items that are just hard to shoot one in when we have other competing projects. So, we're trying to put paving into that same kind of every other year piece. I can go to, let's say, just about any of the schools, especially central, quickly find need for things like sidewalks and hard to lots of curves that need, need some, some work. So, we're looking at a combining the dollars for the paving along with dollars for things like vine striping and paved painting playground areas. So, that, those two types of projects obviously happen at the same time. When we do this kind of paving projects, we're heading into these painting projects. Instead of trying to keep those as two separate chunks, we're looking at combining them into a single $600,000. So, we're not limited if one is a little higher, one is a little lower, we can go with the projects in that way.
And Jason, I, I would add to that. And I think we learned last year is we kind of got the, you know, those other categories of flooring and, and painting approved. With the small allocation of CNR dollars that we get until we can really get that shifted appropriately on an annual budget basis, we've got to figure out a way to get some of these things done. We can't, can't have it both ways, right? I mean, I think we've really set ourselves back if we can't move forward with some of these smaller dollar ones. So, that would be my opinion on that. I mean, I think, you know, if we can free up some capacity under what was originally, you know, a, a much larger number. But understand that to make some level of progress on these things, so it doesn't become a monumental cost later on, we gotta, we need to continue with these smaller, smaller items along the way.
Well, I have a question around the security. So, I mean, are we up to date across all the schools as far as? I think when I came on the board, we were starting to change some of it. So, basic changes have been implemented across all the schools?
Yes, yes. All of the schools, for instance, have glass film on windows, all of them have the bollards. All of them have a single access entry system of key fobs. All of them have security cameras from inside.
Okay.
At this point, it's really enhancements, improvements, looking for ways to, to further the types of security options that we have.
And then the same on the, on the paving and striping, you know? So, like we did the high school, I think, a couple of years ago, right?
Yeah, well, we've done some pieces here and there.
Okay, because I remember being out there and seeing the guy with the, drawing the line.
We're, we're in tough shape with the concrete and paving.
Okay, so that's not.
Very tough shape.
And that's a hard one because it's expensive dollars.
Right, that's why I, that's why I was asking.
No, we'll bring this back at the next board meeting for further discussion.
Okay. Also in your packet is everybody's favorite time of year, budget season?
Yeah, and just one, I mean, this isn't a vote on, but an informational item and, and kind of a recommendation on process that we talked about in the subcommittee as well. And that is where we locate the budget workshop in terms of the piece of the process. So, historically, what we've done is we hold the workshop and then the superintendent presents the budget. And there's different ways to do this. And we kind of batted it around from a process standpoint. Felt like we've had feedback from this board of wanting to see some of the bigger picture requests that come in, allow the administration to prioritize that. So, we would first do the superintendent's budget after a couple of the, you know, we'll still do special education, we'll still do personnel. I will then present the superintendent's budget. We will take that to the workshop and work informationally off of that so that if there are requests formally to make moves on reallocations or on reductions, the Board of Ed will see that number come down based on what their requests are. And then the Board of Ed approved budget will be varied from the superintendent's budget. We've kind of all packaged it together and I think sometimes the messaging can get lost in that, although it's very collaborative on our end. I think this will be clearer to other boards of, hey, what was the Board of Education's role in feedback to the superintendent on the budget development process? So, a subtle change, but I think it's worth, you know, giving it a shot and, and seeing how we do. Absolutely. All right.
Any questions on the, on the calendar? Great. All right, comes to our second public audience. I will remind the audience that they have three minutes. Please state your name and your address.
My name is Lori Boyko and at this point, you all know exactly where I live. I decided to speak at the end tonight to not disrupt the very important business the Board. board needed to conduct, but I wanted to go on record addressing the comment made by the chair at the last meeting that this board thrives on and welcomes public audience. We excel with the involvement, engagement of the parent community. We welcome and appreciate the public audience we receive each and every meeting. I don't know where or when this engagement or appreciation of the parent community is occurring, but it certainly isn't at board or committee meetings. For years, I've consistently voiced to this board my concerns as a parent for the inappropriate content in the curriculum. In 2022, on February 8th, I expressed concern with issues being discussed across the curriculum at Simsbury High School. On February 23rd, I questioned the social and emotional curriculum. On April 22nd, I expressed concern with some of the sexual content of course assignments as not appropriate for teachers to teach our children. On May 10th, I cited Board of Ed policy that the display or possession of pornography is prohibited and questioned why the same policy does not apply to the reading material in the school, and mentioned there was no discussion in board meetings regarding curriculum issues. Several other parents voiced similar concerns for pornographic content in the schools as well as consequences for sexual harassment. At the same meeting over two years ago, Board member Willerup stated that continuous improvement is the board's philosophy. On May 24th, I shared my concern again, the controversial issues raised at Board of Ed meetings are not discussed publicly. In June, I raised concerns about sexually explicit and scientifically unfounded materials used in class. Then in 2023, on May 9th, I pointed out that it is the role of the board to determine if controversial materials are suitable to and approve them. On June 13th, to a meeting packed with parents with similar concerns, I made it clear that the board was enacting policies around sex and gender that were inappropriate for children, and these, these policies were infringing on the rights of students without body dysmorphic disorders. On September 26th, I detailed unwelcome sexual discussions that were alienating to some students taking place in certain classes. On November 28th, 2023, I understandably expressed frustration with the lack of response regarding books in our schools. I reminded the board that it is your job to approve curriculum materials. At the last board meeting on, in October, as you all know, I made it very clear that the graphic sexual and violent content of the assigned reading is entirely inappropriate for teens. The entire high school experience for the last four years has been rife with an unwelcome infusion of sexual content in required assignments, the library, and frankly, throughout the halls and displays and conversations. Yet whatever any board member viewpoints may be, agreeing or disagreeing, the board has openly and continuously exhibited deliberate indifference. So while you all may not want to hear what I have to say, this board has an affirmative responsibility to me and the entire Simsbury community to address these concerns thoroughly and openly. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? With that, our next board meeting, like I said, will be on the 10th of December. Coincidentally, that's also the first meeting of the Charter Revision Committee, just so you all know. But anyways, we'll be back on our home turf at the Board of Ed conference room. Again, appreciate the hospitality of our friends here at Loudmell Lane. It's been, it's a beautiful building. I encourage everybody, again, to come out this week or Saturday for the tours. And with that, we stand adjourned.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Sorry, thank you.
I'll second that.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Hi.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.